Salt, rise, please, for the plans of allegiance. Our plans of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. It's a public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. We have one item to discuss, resounding request by Mark Wooler, the property located at 205 Robert Street Southeast, tax parcel 527-17BKA29R, from B3 General Business to R2 Two Family Residential. This property is scheduled as residential in the future land use map of the Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here tonight to discuss this? All right, moving on. I call a regular meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. The first item is the approval of minutes from the previous meeting. I assume you've all had time to read and review.
I recommend, all right, make a motion to adopt the minutes as presented. Second, Mr. Hunter.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of approving these minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. This is our citizens' hearing portion of our meeting, and we're going to adjust things around a little bit. We're still waiting to determine if the wrestling team is coming tonight. So next up on the agenda will be Terry Colwell, Director of Aquatics, to address council regarding electronic signage. And I believe you have a hand out there in front of you.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor Barber and Christiansburg Town Council, it is my pleasure to introduce an opportunity for increasing citizen awareness, promoting the Aquatic Center, and generating revenue. This is the third year of a request in the Aquatic Capital Budget for an LED sign. Because we are challenged each year with decreased spending and increased revenue, I offer tonight a format for progressive change. A huge challenge faced by our aquatic staff is how we promote the facility with our services and products. How do we send a message of special events, of swim meets, or that we're holding swim lessons? I believe it is imperative to the success of the Aquatic Center that public information is communicated in a unique format. The projected location of the LED sign would be the corner of North Franklin and Mill Lane, one of the most traveled areas in our town of Christiansburg. With me tonight are a few members of the Advisory Board, here to show support in regards to the project. I have Shirley Hallick and Jamie Williams. In recent Aquatic Center survey, it was apparent that our citizens are unaware of the offerings the center has available for them. I am very hopeful the LED sign will provide them the public information that they desire. My goal with this sign is to increase awareness and attract our citizens into a facility that promotes health and fitness at all levels. I would like to introduce tonight Mr. Mark Foran. Mark is the General Manager of Ballpark Signs, a local company and a unique concept in marketing and signage. He will present not only the LED sign, but also the opportunity to allow sponsorships capable of generating revenue for years to come. What?
I'd also like to thank the Town Council and Mayor Barber for your time today. I was asked to attempt this meeting today to help illustrate the value, importance, and benefits of an LED display for the Christiansburg Aquatic Center. This started about a year ago, and after months of research, I concluded that Optech Displays is the perfect partner for this project. I've spoken with many of my fellow signmakers and LED manufacturers about the project, and we feel that this is the best option for this project. Optech Displays, sorry, what's that again? Optech Displays has an excellent track record providing high-quality product that'll last for years. They have a highly-trained support teams for jumpers shooting when needed. They have warranty programs that provide five years coverage on LEDs and the communication parts for the LED system. They've worked with Fortune 500 companies all over the world. You'll see the LED info, you'll see in the LED info packet, some of the noble projects and clients have chosen Optech Displays as their preferred manufacturer for a high-quality display system. According to the SBA Digital Research, advertising can increase sales from 15% to 150% using the LED display. While this percentage changes with each shot of industry location of the LED and other important factors, it's an excellent resource for increasing sales for your business. The LED model for this, the LED model that will be best for this solution for this project would be the Infinity 20mm RGB video display. This model will create high-effective ads that will help deliver the message to thousands of local residents. Some of the key features of this model are stunning visual, full-color graphics, it's a double-sided display, so from either direction, I don't know where Franklin Street they're coming from, that we give them the visibility. Average lifespan of the LED is 100, per, is 100,000 hours. That's 11 years and four months, the lifespan projected for the LED display itself. That's without having any issues and problems. While things may occur, there's still a five-year coverage on that fore end. 60 frames per second, most competitor models are close to 45 frames per second. More frames per second, the better when changing one ad to the next. It has 100 dimming levels, auto-dimming based on the time of day, so the brightness level of the LED changes throughout the day to accommodate whether, you know, some LEDs are too bright at night, which I think is bad for traffic, and this model is created to help adjust for that, which is an excellent safety feature. Text graphic capabilities, up to seven lines of copies, seven lines of copy, 26 max characters per line, characters ranging from 5.5 inches to 63 inches in height. It comes with a media editor software that can program the unit up to one year in advance. This package comes with a laptop with software already located, already installed on it. The laptop will update the LED using Wi-Fi. Excuse my voice. It has lifetime hardware phone support and lifetime software phone support, and again, five-year parts and manufacturer labor service, training by phone and online services. So the sign will be ready to go right off the bat after some training with the staff of the CAC. The LED sign has multiple options for the installation. The LED sign can be installed below the current existing sign, which is currently there on top. This will create a beautiful sign that one has to entrance of the facility. The LED can be installed by itself, can be installed by itself with some small applications to brand the CAC name above the sign. Then the existing CAC sign can be moved to the opposite side of the facility for the other, for the rear entrance. Either way, the LED sign is the perfect solution to help increase sales and provide residents with daily, up-to-date information on classes, events, and other promotions. The LEDs work by, even if it's only to use to promote the CAC. It can also be used to promote the town of Christiansburg, public events, weather alerts, and other important town business topics. It does not stop there when it comes to the value of the LED display. It can be used to create a new market segment for the CAC. Local businesses can purchase monthly ads, excuse me, monthly ads to help promote their companies to thousands of local residents. This is a win-win for the CAC, the town of Christiansburg, and local businesses. The cost of advertising through LEDs is a fraction of the cost compared to other advertising mediums such as television, radio, and newspaper. By using the LED, I believe that we can increase the brand awareness and product awareness for the CAC at a lower cost than what they're currently spending. As far as the messages, they can be changed throughout the day, on the fly for amber alerts, which is obviously a great feature to have for the local, for local residents to get the word out. As you notice, something that's coming up on your agenda here shortly is all businesses are required to register their alarms each year. There's no registration, it's just a way to get the messages out to thousands of people in a, in a, in a high-traffic-volume area, which is a really important area to cover. We can create a sponsorship program that will be beneficial for all parties. This program will help pay for the LED sign. It's an excellent way to purchase one of the best marketing tools today. The ads end up paying for the LED display over the years while the CAC and the town of Christiansburg increase their brand awareness and better promote their events throughout the years. And the ratio can be changed around to a format to whatever fits the town and the CAC as far as what you need for it. But I've suggested to do a three-to-one ratio to where, for every three CAC and public messages ads, there'd be one sponsor ad coming in, and then using four sponsors only total for the sponsorship program. This will give each sponsor seven point ad, seven-plus ads per hour. Each sponsor receives 60 ads per eight-hour segment. As far as a marketing value for local businesses, this is a good value, and they will see value in this type of marketing. As far as paying for the sign, it takes one, one ad, it would take it a long time, it would take it roughly 11 years and eight months to pay for itself. Again, these are numbers, they're just projections. Could be higher as far as the value that we actually go with if it's approved on anything. As far as, the best possible scenario is a, if we have four ads running on it each month, it would pay for itself in two years and 10 months. This is based on an LED sign, double-sided as we've, you know, projected here. And I just think it's a great way for the town to advertise important messages you need to get out, but I also believe it's an essential tool for the CAC to help them generate more revenue and increase their sales. At the same time, we have the ability to allow our local businesses to advertise, which is a great resource for high-traffic-volume areas that they can advertise. I mean, truly, it's a win-win-win, for local businesses, and it's for the CAC, and it's for the town of Christiansburg. And just like I say, thanks for your time, allowing me the opportunity to talk about it, and hopefully, thanks for your work. Appreciate it.
Any questions at this point?
I don't know, I have a comment. I've been on council for a while, and the whole time that I've been on council, I have fought signs somewhere of this nature. I mean, I don't even like the sign at Sonic, and I don't like the sign at, at the bowling alley, and I, I've said to myself, I, and I'm not, you know, you can correct me this, I don't want to have town of Christiansburg, you know, look like Las Vegas.
Certainly not.
And if you go to Lexington, Virginia, if you go to Williamsburg, if you go to Charlottesville, they don't allow stuff like this. And I'm saying, I'm not saying that this is a bad idea, but I'm just saying, sometimes, if we let this sign come in, and we do these commercial ads, then it's very hard for us to control, if you ask me, other people trying to put in signs of this nature, and before you know it, one thing after another. And I, I could be way off track, but that's just the way I feel.
Steve, Kerry has digital signs in town, and in addition, our ordinance allows signs with certain limitations on sizes and so forth.
We got approximate costs on this? I haven't.
I know, under budget, we could hit anything below 60 for this type of sign, scale, double-sided, with the 20mm, which is a very, very high-end model, but at the same time, it's, it's going to pay for itself through the CAC, just increasing its sales, it's going to pay for itself. So it's really, it's a multi-tier platform when you think about the sign. You can't think of it as just, I ask you not to think of it as just a sign for the CAC. It truly is a three-way street. If you don't bring in sponsorships, it's still going to pay for itself. We don't need sponsorship to have to pay for itself. The increased revenue at the CAC will come from this display, getting out the classes, providing more information, better information on when the events are happening at the facility.
Henry, just, just for information, the preliminary grant you have on budget, has that in it right now? Six?
Well, I mean, I just, we've got, it was, budget's just seen it out tonight, so.
That's, that's 60,000 for the sign and up and running.
Now, that's, that's installation cost and all that, correct?
If you read this, it's taken that existing sign, one of the options, you'll take that off of there, put the LED sign down, put it back on top of it, and so forth, so it includes all of that and the labor.
So who do we got here tonight from the Advisory Board? We've got Jeremy and Shirley. Terry, what kind of numbers we talking about, pulling in? The sign goes up, how many people we anticipate the, I mean, that's been, I think, council's issue, at least mine, is local participation. We get plenty of people coming from out of town to participate at our wonderful facility, but how many people, I mean, we're looking to have a better penetration into our residents coming out to the Aquatic Center. So what are we looking at, an increase in our numbers?
Thank you, Norm.
Mr. Showalter, I think the challenge that we have, or what I find from the citizens of the town of Christiansburg, is they drive to the Aquatic Center and they realize there's a swim meet that were closed. And several times I have heard them say to me, "If only we would have known," or, you know, and we do, we have press releases, and we try to get it out in every way that we possibly can, on our website, and various different forms of media. They would not have even drove up Mill Lane if there was a sign that said what the swim meet is, "See you Monday morning, we'll be open again to the public at 5:30," some kind of informative, friendly information. I would hope that the people that don't realize what the Aquatic Center has to offer, that we can put that on the sign. Many different aerobics classes, obviously, in the water, athletic classes, people that are almost sometimes scared to even come into that big facility. There's still people in the town of Christiansburg that have not walked into the Aquatic Center. I want to find them. To get a number for you, Mr. Showalter, I would hope that's 10%. I hope that I can increase the citizens in the town of Christiansburg 10% to come in.
Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, and as always, thank you for your support of the Aquatic Center.
Next on the agenda is John King, Chairman of the Christiansburg Bike Way Walkway Committee, to provide a progress report. Mr. King?
Thank you. I'm glad so many people came out to hear about sidewalks and bike ways.
Hey, don't take over, right?
I didn't know I was so popular. But I'm the result, funny to John King, I've been living in Christiansburg since 2007, and I guess I'm the result of talking to my neighbor, who happened to be the mayor, several years ago, about sidewalks and bikeways in Christiansburg, and here I am on a committee, and then I'm chairing the committee, so that just served the lesson to everyone, be careful before you speak.
Oh, yes, the sidewalk actually, yeah, I watch.
But the committee was formed several months ago, we've been meeting since October, and it's comprised of some folks here on the council, private industry folks, and private citizens as well, and we've met every, the first Friday of every month, and a few of us have met outside of that as well, and it's been pretty, gone pretty well. So basically, I'm going to run through this real quick, give you a couple of things. Basically, some things we'd like the town to consider funding studying, as well as some things that we could probably do now that will help some, help the safety and everything else that's good, goes along with sidewalks and bikeways. So our mission, and I'll be kind of honest like this, I stole a lot of this from the Fairfax County Bike Way Committee, I was like, you know, to reinvent the wheel. So we basically want to help improve the town infrastructure so that residents and others can safely travel between and through major commercial residential and natural areas using non-motorized transportation, and we also want to build upon the Vision 2020 statement that Christiansburg is an interconnected community. So recent progress, all of you know that the Huckleberry Trail is currently being extended, eventually go to the high school, which is very, great things going on. There's been numerous town sidewalk improvements, as well as understand a study about the traffic situation on North Franklin, so these are all great things. I'm going to, these are four areas that the committee has kind of deemed that we should take a closer look at, and we came up with hundreds, I want to mean hundreds, but, you know, a lot of the different ideas. These kind of came to the top in terms of impact, the actual feasibility of doing them, and cost. So the first is kind of like a two-part thing. This is the Transamerica Bike Route, which runs straight, straight through Christiansburg, kind of starts around College Avenue, goes all the way through Ella Road, and goes by Depot Street Park as well. The Transamerica Bike Route is one of the most popular coast-to-coast cycling trails in the United States, and so we thought, you know, our goal should be to make the Christiansburg section as safe and as accessible as possible, and possibly let the Aquatic Center serve as a, as a hub for cyclists passing through town. The second part of this is the Depot Street Park Connector. The Transamerica Bike Way goes through, or along Depot Street and around the Depot Street Park, so we thought if some kind of connector to the park, to the Aquatic Center, and also to the skate park, and back around, would be a big help to people, not only our citizens using it, but the cyclists passing through town as well. So that's, that's the first, and probably the one that came up with the committee when we were talking of being, you know, the most promising. Second would be extensions of continuous sidewalks along Roanoke Street from down past Sheeler all the way through downtown. I mean, as many of you know, it's, you go, there's some sidewalk, and then it stops, and then there's, you know, a little bit more, there's no pedestrian crosswalks, but there's significant pedestrian traffic, and this would be a big help to our citizens to allow them safer access to grocery stores, the government center, this facility, downtown, as well as recreational areas such as Kiwanis Park. Independence Boulevard in front of the high school, this is an example of a complete street, and I wish John Neal was here because he knows more about it than I do, but basically, the complete street concept is exactly what you see there, sidewalks, medians, bike lanes, motorist lane, as well as another divider median, and we kind of selected the area in front of the high school for this for one reason, it would be the easiest and the least expensive to study. It's a great example of retrofitting existing infrastructure. Location is perfect, given it's where it is in terms of residential community and the high school, and could possibly serve as a model for future development. Finally, this is the last one I'll, I'll bring to your attention, is it would be a new Crab Creek Greenway. So this would be kind of like a Huckleberry-style trail that would go along Depot Street from Roanoke Street all along towards the Aquatic Center, and then also for golf, and go up to Franklin Road. This would link Kiwanis Park, the Aquatic Center, Depot Street Park, Home Street, our section of the, of Highway 76 in North Franklin. Like I said, you can almost consider it, consider it as an expansion of the Huckleberry Trail, and it adds to some of the Roanoke Street, Depot Street intersection improvements that I've heard are starting to take place. So that would be a brand-new, or anything, there's, I have to say, if you've gone down Depot Street, you can see there's plenty of space there to do something like that. But what can be done now? You know, one thing we would want the, the town to make sure is that current and future infrastructure projects accommodate pedestrian and cyclist needs, and this not only includes, you know, crosswalks, but actual, the actual nuts and bolts, you know, if a, a street light or a sign is going up, that the electronics and everything is in there to put in, you know, pedestrian crosswalk, things like that. Town crosswalk signage can be greatly improved, you know, the, the area around, across, on North Franklin, excuse me, around the recreation center is a pretty big concern, and we could add "Share the Road" signs. I'm not sure how many of you know, but the, in front of the governor now is, is legislation to make sure it's three, that if a motorist is passing a cyclist, they have to give three feet, and so "Share the Rooms," road signs would be a big help to get our citizens, let them know that if they see a cyclist, to give them pretty, plenty of space. So in conclusion, and we'll ask if you have any questions, and we've made substantial progress, we still have a way to go if we want to reach our Vision 2020 goals. Pedestrian cyclist needs should be included in the planning process for all of our current future infrastructure projects. Better signage is pretty easy, can have an impact right now, and we believe that the areas recommended for study can help build a community buy-in for any future projects that we want to do. With that, I'll leave it to any questions, and I'll do my best to answer. Yes?
First of all, I, I think I'd like to speak for council, and we appreciate all that you're doing and what you've just done here. And on the second thing was the thing about Depot Park, I think that's outstanding, and I, one of the, one things I've been thinking about is trying to make an extension there between the skateboard park and, and Depot Park, and there are several people here right now who represent soccer in, in the Christiansburg, and you know that park has been, we've got soccer fields there now, and it's really been coming along, and this would be just sort of a icing on the cake, is the way I would look at it, if we could develop that, you know? And so I, we just appreciate your thinking about that and as driving on.
Thank you.
How often do you meet, and what times, frequency and duration, that way perhaps of members of the community would like to be a part of? I had the pleasure of stopping in once, not to, for the meeting, and happened to hear some things, and it was very enlightening to hear what you're discussing, some of the plans, it's actually quite exciting.
Yeah, we meet the first Friday of every month, 7:30, and we build in the room next door.
7:30 a.m.
7:30 a.m., so we usually last about an hour, hour and a half, depends on how, I like to talk with myself. But it's, yeah, we love any input that everyone has, kind of see this as a starting point. We by no means have all the answers, but this is kind of what we came up with in a relatively short amount of time.
You've got a very strong team.
Oh, we do.
In my opinion, so it was, it was something to hear you all discuss.
Like the other members of the committee to stand up that are here, if you don't, I'm going to embarrass you. Go. And introduce yourself.
Oh, go ahead. Joe Powers.
I'm Susan Willis.
Paul.
Brad Everly.
Nicole Parr.
I'm sorry to embarrass you, but I'm not really sorry. I mean, we'd like for, for our co-teams to come and be seen well. Well, it's, it's an A-team, and our citizen representative, we know our staff and how great they are, for the citizen members, it was the first time I had met any of the three that we have. Dan Maderick is not able to be here today, and he's an older distinguished veteran, is bicyclist hardcore. I mean, we've got an outstandingly strong committee here, and I'm very excited about the energy that's been generated just since October, and the focus, and all this comes with a hook that John hasn't mentioned, we do have some big plans this year, and there's no free bowls of chili. But I just want to recognize the other members that are here as well.
John, would you mind, could you forward that to each of us?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to take a look at.
Yeah. Any other questions, or eggs in there?
We'll, we'll save that for the cost.
John, thank you very much, we appreciate your efforts and the committee's efforts. I just think this is heading in the right direction for Christiansburg. Next on our, in our citizens' hearing, we have Della Akers to address council on the annual Montgomery County Relay for Life. There she is, how are you doing?
I'm fine, how are you?
Doing well.
Good. Well, thank you Mayor Barber and council members for having me, for the opportunity to stand before you again. I promise that I'll try not to be as emotional as I was last year, but this is very near and dear to my heart. I'm here to talk about the Montgomery County Relay for Life and what our community is doing to make a difference in the fight against cancer. Our community has consistently been recognized in the Mid-Atlantic as one of the highest per capita dollar amounts raised for invaluable services and research with the American Cancer Society. And how can we forget that the American Cancer Society has been at the forefront in research for every significant breakthrough in the fight against cancer? Celebrate, remember, fight back. This is the theme of every relay event. This is an event for the whole community, families, coworkers, churches, businesses, friends, everyone joins together on their relay teams. It is an event that starts at 6:00 p.m. at night and goes through the night until 6:00 a.m. The concept behind this is that once a patient is diagnosed with cancer, cancer doesn't sleep, it's with them all the time, 24/7. So our teams are there all night long, we're there, we have fun, we fundraise, it's just a community coming together. We celebrate our survivors and caregivers in the community, we remember those that have lost their battles with cancer. We remember those that have lost their battles with cancer, and we encourage everyone to commit, to continue to fight back. I'm here tonight to ask the town council to once again approve our Paint the Town Purple campaign that precedes the Montgomery County Relay for Life. This year, the event is May the 30th, Friday, May the 30th. So if council members, if you all haven't joined a relay, I invite you to come out, anyone that hasn't joined in relay before. We ask that the council approves Paint the Town Purple, May 26th through 30th, and that you approve to make this an annual event that precedes the relay event. Our relay teams, as a fundraiser, will be selling purple bows for $10 to the residents, businesses, so they can display on their homes and companies. In addition, I would like to ask that Thursday before the event, May 29th, be recognized and proclaimed as a day of hope, and everyone encouraged to wear the color purple in support of relay. So I want to thank you for your time tonight. If you have any questions, let me know.
How many members did you all have last year? How many individuals do you think?
Oh, my goodness. It was, it was close to 800. Already, we have 51 teams signed up and, how many participants?
Almost 400.
Almost 400 participants already this year. So it really does reach throughout the whole entire community.
What did you raise last year?
It was probably, it was around 160,000 for cancer. Yes. Yes. So it's a fabulous event. It's a fabulous event every year.
Mr. Mayor, do we designate that timeframe last year as the Paint the Town, Paint the Town Purple Week?
We did.
That, I just, I couldn't try to remember. I know we did something.
I'm sure that we did. As the other mayor, I think we remember. That would be fine.
We did.
We did.
We all got the purple.
Yes, yes.
I think we'll be discussing that in the very near future.
Yes, ma'am.
Type of positive action and...
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that I am a member of one of these teams, and I will accept checks at any time. American Cancer Society.
You'll keep us pushing on this thing, right, sir?
They are a wonderful team.
I think we can possibly, once we get the verbiage correct and the dates correct, we'll put this on a future meeting. Next out, somewhere in that area.
All right. Thank you so much.
Della, thank you very much. I appreciate your contact.
Thank you.
Don't see any wrestlers here yet, so...
No, I don't either.
All right. We'll move that one to the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
We have Sherri Blevins to address council. We're going to the park and ride located near Falling Branch Elementary School. Blevins, good to see you again, without the brownies again.
Good evening, Mayor Barber, council, and Chief Sisson. On behalf of the families and friends of Falling Branch community, we're here tonight to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation to the council, Chief Sisson, and the Christiansburg Police Department for your exceptional service and commitment. As you are well aware, due to the close proximity of the park and ride across from Falling Branch Elementary School, that school and community has and continues to deal with unwanted visitors and safety issues. We, as parents of the Falling Branch community, are thankful for the increased patrols, support, and dedication that the police department has provided in keeping us safe. We are proud of the support and leadership that this council has provided in our time of need. From the very beginning, you listened to our concerns and acted, continuing to support and advocate for the safety of our children on our behalf. Now, we understand that working closely with the council and the police department, that we know that you'll say, no thank you, no official thank you is necessary. However, we, as parents, are so appreciative of your continued commitment and wanted to officially thank you. So please accept, Chief Sisson and Mayor, if you guys would, please accept this public recognition of our official appreciation to your service and commitment to not only our children, but to the Falling Branch community.
Thank you.
Allison, did you get everything? Come on, Eli.
I've been around.
Come on, Sherri.
You got it? Thank you.
You got it? Thank you. Sorry. You're better than that. Allison, did you get everything? Come on, Eli.
I've been around.
Come on, Sherri.
You can get some.
You got it? Thank you. Sorry. You're better than that. Come on, Eli. You got it? Thank you. Sorry. You're better than that. You're better than that. I know that this is addressed by councilmen in Christiansburg, placed on the board. I hope that you will cover a problem with the spot in the police department that's viewed as covered, if not bring it back with us.
I'll take care of it. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sherri, I'd just like to state that you and the groups there at, through the PTA and through the parent organizations there at Falling Branch, you have always continuously come up and talked with us, engaged with us, called us, emailed us. We always had a constant dialogue, but also you all have kept the same information flowing into the board supervisors and the school board. So your tireless efforts, I hope, will pay dividends in the future, and certainly will be, I can't speak for all of us, but I think that we're all committed obviously to public safety and safety of our children, so we appreciate, I appreciate your efforts very much. You're all of your efforts very much.
What Mr. Hall is saying is, we ain't quitting.
We know. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay. I believe under, Mr. Nagel, are you here to address council on something?
If Mr. Smith can go first?
That's fine. You just tell us who, who we got, who we're going.
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, I want to introduce myself. My name is Brian Smith. I'm the new varsity coach at Christiansburg High School. And Tess had asked me to just make a few brief comments about the state of youth soccer and a continuing need for multi-use field space in the town. First of all, thank you for the efforts at Depot Park. We really appreciate that. And just to keep you abreast of where the high school team is, we've got 45 boys on the high school team. Of those 45, only eight are juniors and seniors. That means that approximately 80% are sophomores and younger. So when you look at the demographics, the participation rates, the younger you skew, the higher the participation rate. In fact, 13 of the 45 players in our program are in eighth grade. And if we all look at the club that's been established here in Christiansburg, and it's been very successful, if we look down into seventh grade, the participation rate is even higher. Below that, I don't have a lot of knowledge, but I can tell you that helping out with the club and working with the coaches and the teams there, and looking at the teams that come to practice at the new Christiansburg Middle School fields where the JV and varsity practice, our practice goes from three, from three to six, and then the club teams come on after that. There's a very large number of youth athletes who are participating on that field, and I would expect that participation rate to only increase over time. I think it's apropos that we're talking about this on a night where you're scheduled to hear from the wrestling program, because it's a wonderful example of how support of the youth program can lead to real success later on. And if we could see a fraction of success in soccer that they have seen in wrestling, we'd be very proud indeed. So congratulations to them. Another thing to note is many of the players that were formerly going outside the town of Christiansburg to play in competitive programs in Roanoke and elsewhere are now staying in town to participate on teams locally here in town. And, you know, with those people, those additional students staying here in town and not traveling away, that adds to the need for additional field space. Another item that's of interest to me is I've looked at the number of eighth graders on my own team. Unfortunately, seventh graders are not eligible to participate in JV. There's no middle school team. It's a discussion that I've had with the athletic director at the middle school, and I'm in discussion with some other coaches from other local high school programs about getting together a middle school league. And I think all that'll take is an approval from some other local high schools and middle schools that they would be willing to field a team. I think the desire is there, having spoken to the other coaches, so that would, again, increase the number of kids playing on teams here in the town of Christiansburg. And I just wanted to maybe increase the awareness of that and take a moment to introduce myself as the new head coach and to say thank you for your efforts, and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Barber, town council members. I'm Dennis Nagel with the Christiansburg Soccer Club. When I came here for the very first time just over five years ago, we had one competitive soccer team. This spring, we have 13 of those teams competing. That's the farm teams that are feeding into the major league system that Coach Brian Smith is talking about and on the girls' side as well. So we're now developing players that have experience in competitive soccer, so when they get to high school, they're ready to compete, not only for locally, but in state championships. I wanted to thank this town council for the Depot Street Park. Even if you don't care for soccer, if you go out there on any night, that was a neglected area of the town one, six years ago. And if you go out there on any given night, not only is the soccer field full, there are people walking on the track, there are young children playing in the playground, and there are people playing basketball. There's a full usage of that area. And I know that you'll be soon considering the development of a larger park, and I have no doubt that if you develop that park, it will fill not only with soccer, but baseball, football, families. And all of these things will have a benefit to the town, because each and every year that I'm in the soccer program, I see more and more that the, that the families and the children that have success in the school system and success in the community are the families that are participating in all of these sports. So the more that you're able to get these developed, the better this town will become. Thank you.
Mr. Nagel, before you sit down, I have a question. The, you're obviously a member of the Christiansburg Soccer Club, correct?
Right.
How many teams did you all field at all different levels, not just the competitive level, this past year?
We, we are somewhere in the 80 to 90 range total.
How many kids on each of those teams?
It will be as little as six players on a kindergarten team to as many as 15 to 18 on one of our largest teams.
And you all fielded from all levels, from the kindergarten all the way up, correct?
We sold out every single division. We had to stop taking players, turn players away, unfortunately. At some point, we have to set a deadline and get the season underway, but if there was more field space, if we had more parents that knew the sport because it wasn't a sport of many of our parents' generation, we probably could go from close to 800 to over 1,000 participants. If we had the field space, I think we could do that as well.
And as far as right now, then, the amount of the total number of participants, what would you estimate that to be?
We're just under 800 participants each season.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dennis, before you go, it's a private organization. Obviously, you don't receive any funding from the town, but I do want to point out that the Christiansburg Soccer Club, if we remember, donated money to, $5,000 to the Depot Park for its improvements, and that's admirable, at least for me, to see that and the number of youth participants, because I don't think, and Brad, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I would say our football program is probably one of our most popular programs in the town, and it doesn't even scratch the surface of 88 teams. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
If you'll come forward and list your name and address?
My name is Jeff Rowland. I live on Grove Avenue, right across town, not far away. I am the founder and director of the New River Valley Lacrosse Club, and we came to speak on the same point as Mr. Nagel. There's really a great need for multipurpose fields in the area. We're a growing organization. We started in 2001. We, in the last three years, have grown at a rate of about 11% every year. Don't have the benefit, like Mr. Nagel said, there's not a generation here before us that knows about lacrosse. It's growing fast, fastest-growing sport in the country by leaps and bounds. And we're showing that, like I said, every year. This year, I've got two teams of 30 kids. Last year, one of those teams couldn't even have a field program on it. So we're growing quickly, running out of space. This year, we fought hard to get three, three and a half practice fields in the county and are really probably projecting next year could use anywhere from seven to eight. And at this point, when we first started the program, a lot of the interest was in Blacksburg area. I think there are a lot more people from out of town who are more interested and familiar with the sport and easier to kind of flow right into it and support us. At this point, we are quickly becoming a pretty evenly divided Christiansburg, Blacksburg, and Reiner organization. So our Christiansburg representation's going quickly, and as well as the whole club. So we have boys programs and girls programs. This year, we're fielding six teams. Next year, I'm projecting at least nine, probably, if we have the returners. And if we have some, the surprise growth we had this year could be even more than that. So we just wanted to make sure our organization's out there, and we're thinking about lacrosse, and the field use is a great need for lots of different sports in the area.
Can I get your last name one more time?
Rowland, R-O-W-L-A-N-D. It's New River Valley Lacrosse Club.
Do you have a question?
Thanks for coming out, Jen.
All right. Thank you very much.
Anyone else would like to address council?
Mr. Mayor, if I can introduce, Bev Walters, the director of NRB Cares, and she's going to discuss a few things with us real quickly.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, the town council, thank you for letting me speak this evening. I'm Bev Walters, executive director of NRB Cares, and our office is on Main Street here in Christiansburg. This evening, we're going to do, we're going to do a proclamation for naming Child Abuse Prevention Month as April. Every year, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. The reason for the pinwheels is that pinwheels are a nationwide public awareness campaign that puts a new spin on child abuse prevention. And NRB Cares, as a local child abuse prevention agency, works with groups in the community to plant pinwheel gardens in different areas throughout the New River Valley. They're a symbol of childhood, they're a symbol of celebrating the healthy children in our community. And as I can see, being here this evening, Christiansburg really does put children at the heart of their community, because so many things are going on. There are children in our community who are abused and neglected, and we don't want to forget about them, but April is Prevention of Child Abuse Month, and the pinwheel is a symbol of, represents our efforts to ensure the health and development of children while recognizing that child development is a building block for our community and for economic development. Every April, NRB Cares, as I said, we plant pinwheel gardens in honor of children. So I also want, I gave you information, excuse me, about, about NRB Cares and our programs in the community, and I want to thank the town of Christiansburg for their support of NRB Cares financially and in other ways.
Ms. Walters, before you step down, I want to ask you a couple of quick questions in case people don't understand or aren't aware. Would you agree that probably the biggest adversary that we, that all of us have in the fight against child abuse is just simply communication of the services we have out there? People are not knowing of what actually is available to them?
That's, that's true.
And one organization that you all fund is CASA, correct?
That's right.
And I believe we have a CASA member here at this table tonight.
We do.
And a CASA quarter-point special advocate for children. And I just want everyone, you would agree with me, I take it, that the 27th, really, the judicial district, they really utilize CASA for the care of children.
Absolutely.
Extensively.
Last year, we served 152 children through the CASA program. CASA recruits and trains volunteers to advocate for abusing, neglected children in court.
And you're...
Awesome citizens who are standing up for children in our community every day.
And that's one of the many services that you all do provide at NRB Cares?
That's right.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Walters.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you. Does anyone else that would like to address council tonight? Soon enough, I'll close our citizens' hearing.
really, the Judicial District, they really utilize CASA for the care of children?
Absolutely.
Extensively.
Last year, we served one hundred and fifty-two children through the CASA program. CASA recruits and trains volunteers to advocate for abused and neglected children in court. Awesome citizens who are standing up for children in our community every day.
And that's one of the many services that you all do provide at NRB Cares?
Yes.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Walters.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Does anyone else that would like to address council tonight? Soon enough, I'll close your citizens' hearing. We'll go into a discussion by mayor and council members. First item is council action on council's intention to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-eight Solid Waste of the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to garbage collection. The public hearing was held March eleventh, two thousand and fourteen. Mr. Helms, this yours?
I had a public hearing, like you said, and take any comments or approval of ordinances.
Let me ask one question. After Section twenty-eight dash two, did we decide to do something with that?
Actually, we didn't. What we determined is the other, the only, we have in enforcing our ordinances in general in town, we have the ability to go and inspect or request to inspect, you know, to ensure compliance. If the person refuses, then you have the whole administrative warrant procedure. But if we're going to enumerate that in the town code, it'd be best to do it in a general, since it applies to everything other than just this one specific type of enforcement mechanism. So we thought about that, but considering it says that the town manager has the authority to appoint someone, we just left it at this.
He made it run off, but he's got.
Yeah, he may, but that's why we didn't modify it.
I might appoint someone as a guy.
Yeah.
With that information, I would move that we adopt it as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the proposed amendment?
Ordinance?
Not ordinance. It's ordinance, oh, ordinance. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to commend our staff. Tim is here this evening, Ricky Born, there's a.
Jim last name Ricky is on here.
That's good.
That's what I said, Jim is here, Ricky's.
Okay. Brad did it right. And I'm not going to call Cory.
And real quick, real quickly, I just want to note that since this has been a new activity
for the town, there's a lot of things that we learned, lessons we learned, people that have challenges to participate. And our staff has been very outgoing, outreach, interactive, had several meetings. I've seen the trashcans on display at different locations through town. But I just want to commend our staff for listening and making adjustments. I call them calling audibles, calling audibles along the way. And that's really what we have here. And it's not going to stop tonight, I think, as we get into this. But I just want to commend the staff for the proaction, proactivity they've taken to address the things that we couldn't anticipate going into it.
Before we jump into it, I'm going to piggyback on what Brad said. Tonight, we had our first sewer, solid waste and water committee, and Jim and Stan was there, and of course Barry, thank you for being, thank you guys for being there. See, I got right this time, Jim. But I tell you, I've been on council six, seven years. I've never seen the response at staff or the energy that's being put in, and it is much appreciated. You'll see more of that coming from our committee, especially Public Works, and I'm sure the rest of the administration as well. But thank you.
I think you've got people so enthusiastic, and a couple hundred of them are already using the cards even though they've not.
I'll leave you with something. I've already got rid of my old trashcans, and of course, I didn't read the information that came with it. So.
Jim, can you help us?
Look, look, my wife puts up the trash.
Yeah, well, I was in a meeting last night, and Jim and I, I think he reportedly referred to the fact that he threw his trashcan in.
I was so excited to get them. I saw, you know, I got rid of mine too.
We have, we have a motion. Madam Clerk, will you poll council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
Councilman Dan Hoosier?
Aye.
I believe that'd be six ayes, correct? Thank you. Proposed resolution dates to the name of the month of April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Councilman Hall?
Mr. Mayor, members of council and everyone present, I think Mrs. Akers mentioned earlier, I don't know if Dale is still here or not?
Yeah.
About how she gets very excited about the Relay for Life, and I can appreciate that. This is, I guess, what, I hate to say my relay, but this is, we all have our individual interests of which we take a strong heart, and this is one of mine. And I truly cannot tell you how much I appreciate council and the mayor specifically for pushing this, and he has pushed this, just not in Christiansburg, but beyond the boundaries of Christiansburg to other localities. And it's my pleasure. I don't know if Mr. Mayor, we've officially done this yet.
I'm going to vote on it tonight.
Yes.
So if you want to read it, or, I think everyone has seen the, has seen the resolution.
I don't mind reading it shortly.
You want to read it? If you don't want to read it?
Sure, Barbara. And one quick thing before I read it, the Child Abuse Prevention Month is a, it's a national child abuse prevention month, is actually April. The president signs a proclamation each year, the governors are allowed, they want to, to kind of take that and run with it. But it's really, it's a threefold process. It's public awareness, just raising public awareness of what's out there, promoting community involvement, volunteerism, things of that sort. And furthermore, it's to help to explain the types of, or describe the types of resources that are present within the community. There's so many things we don't know that exist that are right down the road for families that are struggling, that are getting behind, where they just get, where they just can't control what's going on in their personal life. They just don't, I think, have all the information. And so that's why this is so important. As community leaders, as a council, I think if we, as we move forward on this, I think it gives us, I hate to say it, a podium, but that's exactly what we have. We kind of have the ability to kind of lead this approach, and it just seems to have more oomph behind the movement. But again, I'm very appreciative. I've already told Mr. Barber two or three times, it's been private, and he's really pushed this. And we've got other localities that are looking at this yesterday, today, tomorrow, that are hopefully going to be getting on board behind this as well. So without further ado, I'll repeat. Yes, you're right, you're right. The proclamation, and it's just a, it's a child abuse, it's a proclamation recognizing the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, written in all the legal leaves, you have to love that. Whereas preventing child abuse neglect is a community goal that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. Whereas child maltreatment can occur when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and without the ability to cope. And whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable, in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas all citizens should become involved in supporting families and raising their children in a safe nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among families, social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore being resolved that the council of the town of Christiansburg does hereby proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and does call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in community efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and neglect and strengthening the community in which we live. And I think it's at the key with the Pinwheel for Prevention Campaign that Ms. Walters talked about, it's understanding that, yes, we're not forgetting the victims of child abuse, what they go through on a daily basis, but it's inspiring us and energizing us to get out there and see what we can do for. I hate to say it like this, but all the good intentions in the world don't mean a thing in child abuse unless you're willing to put some oomph behind your feet, get out there, see what you can do, and see how you can, again, get involved in the community. So I'm really appreciative, very much so. Thank you all.
Is motion?
I would make the motion that we, that we proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month pursuant to the proclamation of which I just read.
And I would second it. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Madam Clerk, will you poll town council for me, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
Councilman Dan Hoosier?
Aye.
I believe that's six ayes.
Mr. Barber, I ask you one more question, sir.
Certainly. I don't mean to take up all the time here on council, but because we've just proclaimed it as April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, two things I'd want to mention in the community is that Plasky County JMDR Court is going to be holding their Child Abuse Prevention Meeting. It's a, it's a community gathering with reception following on the April tenth, Ms. Walters. And Christiansburg, for the first time, McGurman County JMDR Court will do this on April thirtieth this year in the same McGurman County, I think it's going to be the General District Court Room with the reception following. And it's, again, it's just about a forty-five minute speaker inspirational message about what we can do to help to combat child abuse in the community, followed by reception where everybody can kind of come together. It's an hour and a half talk, so love to see all of you out there at either one or both of those events. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Times are.
Six o'clock for vote, Mr. Mayor.
Six o'clock.
Yes, sir.
We, we talked a little bit about some possible signage for this, and Barry, can I get with you later, or we'll get that job done?
Yes.
Don't want to get anybody mad as we put up a sign wrong in our own town. Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Discussion regarding future use of the Truman Wilson property.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Our reason.
Before we get into this, you know, we've had a lot of folks that have come, and please don't feel slighted, and we won't feel slighted if you decide you want to pursue other objects tonight. We're used to people coming and presenting and leaving, so you would not offend us at all if you would like to leave.
But, but if you want to stay.
But if you want to stay, put on your seatbelts.
This is the sixty-acre parcel behind Walmart that we purchased earlier this year.
It's about as interesting, it's about as interesting as it gets, the town of Christiansburg, what?
And Mr. Mayor, the reason I asked for this to be on the agenda for this evening is because there's a, the Recreation Commission at the last meeting in early March, this kind of came up, just the discussions about the future use of the property, the way obviously it would be utilized, multi-purpose fields, a lot of things that were talked about, everything very informative, of course. But it, what I think I would like to do when I bring to the Recreation Commission next time in April, the first thing we're going to bring is what council asked to bring last time, which is from formal involvement regarding the town race, which we're going to look at in a much wider format. But also now to look at the future development of the Truman Wilson property. With the extension and the wide of one fourteen being well underway, being some dates for completion on that, they're going to be setting the bridge, of course, in the Rimini-Nolles Bridge in the next thirty days, I take it, or give or take. There's a lot of things happening in that particular area. And you've heard from members of the soccer club tonight, eighty-seven teams, eight hundred individuals. The lacrosse club, I was unaware that it was going to shut, we'd never met before. But it just flows perfectly as a segue from what we just recognized as April. There's no greater thing to help get people out and involved, and frankly, some sports and activities, it's positive involvement with families. And we have a unique, I think, ability at the Truman Wilson property to kind of hit the ground running with that. So that being the case, I would like to have some, not consensus per se, but maybe some direction from council that can help lead our discussion at the next Recreation Advisory Committee meeting concerning the timeframe, timeline, what we're looking to do there, financial, we're looking at perhaps saving some property off that we don't need next to one fourteen. There's a lot of things that I'd like to know about as far as leading this discharge if we can. I'll be honest with you, my concerns are, it's a beautiful piece of property, and I want to utilize it for recreation. I want to utilize it for the town as our town park, as we discussed. And it just, sooner than later. And that's where I'm at. And so that's why I brought, put this on the agenda, I wanted to get the feelings from council members and just to kind of help us direct the way we discuss this at the next Recreation Committee meeting.
Mayor, no, big comment? The Recreation Plan, hopefully, will, is supposed to tell us, the thing we're working on right now, D and G, tells us the overall possible uses that we should use this for. And in the budget this year is a more detailed request, or a request for more detailed plan just for this area. I have to get the overall master plan to look at, a master plan for the Wilson property just to let you, everyone know that.
Do you have a, with that being, and I saw that as a capital, actually, it was in the Capital Improvement Plan, I believe, the fifty thousand allocated under the budget for the architectural renderings, is that correct?
Well, for the master plan for the Wilson property.
Do we have a timeline, Mr. Helms, if the, at the budget, if that item is approved through the budget, that where, a ballpark where we're actually looking at breaking ground on that facility?
Yeah.
Any ballpark at all?
No pun intended. If I remember, if I remember our discussion when we purchased this property, I think we knew upfront that this was going to be a long-term project, and it's not going to happen overnight. I think that by identifying some areas that we'd be willing to part with, to develop some funds, we could speed it along. But this thing could be, you know, could be ten years to developing to its full capabilities. So to set a date, say, we're going to be putting them all out there in two thousand and seventeen, I don't think we could do that, and just justify to do that.
No, and I'm not asking you to set a date such as that, but as far as setting a date and we're looking at breaking ground to developing the facility that we can all utilize, I don't think that would be as far as.
I would think once we have a plan for it, there's possibility that we can take that then, in having the property as some kind of matching fund, look at getting some grants to get it started. Now, in addition, it's in the proposed budget for twenty fourteen and fifteen, we've only proposed, we've proposed two hundred thousand dollars to go into the reserve for that. That's a start, and.
Is that Truman Wilson Reserve?
Yes.
Okay.
It's Truman Wilson Reserve. It's, it's, but that's what it's really for, is we could have done our recreational smart for that. And I think we're going to have to look at utilizing the front of the property, possibly, as you mentioned, plus the fact that, I would like to think that there would be some recreational grants that we could pursue. Now, we'll talk about it a little later in the proposed budget, but we've been very successful in grants that we requested this year, coming year, so for other things.
This is important enough, actually, Councilman Hall, this, this particular subject is probably important enough, well, it is important enough, I think, for us to actually meet separately in a workshop, and with this being our focus.
Sure.
And see what each, you know, each council person, what's on their mind about this. And then to get those grants, we do need to do the master planning and have something tangible to say, this is what we're going to do, this is what we need money for specifically. There are several grants out there, recreational access and so forth, to get us, get the ball rolling. But I think we all support it, but I think this is important enough for us to just have this be our focus for a, for a workshop.
Well, the master plan right now is what schedule, May, June, or something like that.
Yeah, the summer would probably get there.
So we really need something like that to work out the basis.
Well, I don't think that's what court's asking us about whether we're going to decide right now that we're going to move forward and start turning dirt come January. And you correct me if I'm wrong, Court, but the master plan should be completed when?
In June. That's overall recreation master plan, and then.
Which will include this?
Well, yes, it'll hopefully point out what areas, what types of recreation would fit best here compared to our overall program.
And that's based on the survey, the rec survey that just went out as well?
And I want to say it's about a thousand surveys that were returned, I believe, thereabouts.
It's a great turnout.
It's a great turnout.
And then, starting next fiscal year, have a plan specifically for this area. We need to determine where the road's going to go through it, and then that will help define, you know, what, what we can sell that comes up.
And I guess what I'm looking at, council, to be blunt, is an aggressive campaign to develop in that property. I'm not looking at this as you mean overnight endeavor, but I look at things like for public interaction, public safety, for, I mean, it's sixty-two acres of land that's going to be sitting, that I think our public is demanding now, and they would all utilize it now. I think it'd be amazing to see the amount of people that would be on the, at site, onsite. But I like for us to take an aggressive approach. And if that means us looking at reserve monies, I'll be honest with you, absolutely. I don't have the issue with that. So I was put it out there as far as my position. And as far as the five acres or whatever we're looking to shave, and then reinvest back in developing the property, that's money that, that would be liquid capital available, accessible immediately, if that's what we're looking to do. I think its desirability is only going to increase as we go forward. But my fear is that we are looking, Mr. Barber, like you put it, ten years down the road, and it's, we're not where we want to be yet still on that property.
I would agree with Court, Mike, I mean, ten years is just too long.
Well, I didn't pinpoint a date, ten years, but I knew when we bought it, that it could take a while to get it totally completed. Doesn't mean that we can't get part of it done.
We can do it in phases.
In phases, that's.
I think, I agree with Brad. I mean, council's going to have to take it seriously when we get the information back. And Court, I don't want to put anything in your mouth, but I think you're looking at an okay from us for the Rec Commission. I mean, when they're presenting certain, certain items from this, they really start I mean, when they're presented certain items from this, that really start looking into the property. Of course, we are the final say in this, but I would rather sooner have discussions in the Recreation Commission than two years from now.
Sure.
Well, if we get those, the master plan, as Mr. Helms put it, when it's completed, and those surveys are evaluated, are utilized, that perhaps within thirty days after that, once we have a chance to review it, we can come in and start maybe meeting, either monthly or quarterly, on just the Truman Wilson property, open meetings, of course, but there is, there's a need, not just for the multi-purpose fields, which there is a demand for those now, but also there's, I think, just the community open park. Twenty, I just can't imagine twenty-six acre park, it's just going to astound me. But I just, again, I think it will be yet another investment in that area with the Hope River Extension already, it's just going to be a beautiful area. It's, it's very exciting, then, of course, it ties in with the bike ways and walkways, it's just, you can't help but get excited about this. That's why I just don't want it, want it to sit there and wait, and I'm not saying council will do that, I don't mean to say you will do that. I just, I'd like for us to be very aggressive in our approach, and if we can do it, you know, so be it, and perhaps, again, Brad's probably right, we can be on it going forward. But that's the whole purpose of me putting this on the agenda for this evening.
Barry, those dollar leases that we have out there, when are they renewed? Month, months?
It's their annual.
January?
December, I think it's December, it's just one now.
Yeah, we had one for six months and one for a year, didn't we?
It's December. And on that, I would like to permission to go ahead and start removing the buildings.
Yes.
They're basically hazard right now, not sure if we're going to have some people staying in at this point.
So I'm talking about burning down horse?
I don't know if you can do that.
Well, I want, our purchasing person is looking into seeing if we can try to sell them for boards and stuff, out of the outbuildings, anyhow, the house.
I got, I got a question. Wasn't that, I mean, in our initial discussions, since, of course, Barry's bringing this up now, and that's a good thing. I believe those front parcels are what we discussed selling, correct?
I think a lot of it would, hence depend on how we're going to enter to, enter into this thing from, from one fourteen, as to what we can safely sell. Yeah, there's several, and there's some interest in those properties, I will tell you now, commercial.
But we need to determine where the road's going to go, and how to determine what-
Do we know where that road's going to go, Mr. Helms?
So again?
I mean, it's going to connect from where the Villas Road is, correct, over, it's kind of like George Green.
I mean, basically, you're looking at easement, right? I mean, Brad, you're the, you're the one in this, is it something where you've got to spend lots and lots of money, have a final plan in? Or can we say, this is, I mean, you would think our staff and a survey could easily say, hey, this is where we want to put it, so we can go ahead and subdivide those parcels, go ahead and end, I don't know if the leases on those parcels, go ahead and move forward.
Basically, the road will come in here across from there, and then it can, you know, depends on, we need to look at the terrain and what the other use are. Road can come in and turn fairly quickly and come over here, it's going to connect, I'm sorry, down this area with the land that was just donated to us from Sean or Heshin, that's, you know, or it could come in a little bit further and turn, so you could have maybe one light here if it turned real quick, or a light on each side, or you're going to come down a little bit further and have two lights here and the rest of recreation. That's the type of things we need to look at in the long range.
The money's on the road fronts for commercial.
Well, not, well, the road frontage, only road frontage we have is right here.
If road frontage is accessed with the road, that would go in.
But once we have a road in here, it'll have road frontage, and there won't be any interest is off of one fourteen, it has to be off to the right over here.
Mr. Helms, because that road is a, that's, VDOT had already decided upon the road going through there, correct?
They, several years, probably ten or fifteen years there.
Will VDOT be covering the cost of that road installation?
Well, that'll be, could be revenue sharing, like you're waiting for twenty-five years on the six-year program.
Because the funding stream from the state is changing year to year?
It's zero right now.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, that's, that's money, there's, there's some grants available that we will be looking into, we need to know where it's going to go first.
But we have autonomy as to how to wind that road into our property?
Well, it'll, yes, we'll decide.
Provide, based on terrain, obviously, and-
At VDOT standards, we have to make sure the curves meet their standards.
So we have the, the resources and the staff to consider the topography and, and utilize the front for best advantage for commercial business and so forth, and what would best connect on the road to, at least to us of preliminary.
Yeah, that'll be part of the study that we're requesting funding for, for the Wilson property, where the road will go, and, and the best place for it versus what we're going to use for recreation.
And when will that study be completed?
Well, it has to be approved in the budget first, and then after the first July, we can start.
We have the study going on by the Planning District Commission, which is a needs assessment, and identifying what a good mix of recreational uses or whatever would be for that. Then what Barry's talking, what Barry's talking about is, the next important step is, is to develop a master plan for the property that takes into account everything we're talking about tonight, and actually comes up with a plan for where does the infrastructure go, and some concepts for staff and council to digest and tweak to what we want to see on this property. But it has to start with laying out the infrastructure and the recreational components that we want to see out there. But that's, that's, the beginning of that is the master plan. And that hasn't started yet, that can't start until the needs are identified and we agree what we want to see out there.
Well, in conjunction with that, as following that, you, of course, if we have, and I'm sure we will have facilities on the side, that'll be just sixty-two acres of open property, but obviously, we want an extremely accurate business plan for utilization of that property, as far as if they're multi-purpose or if there's ball fields and things of that sort, that we know that we can, year to year, you know, bank on. So that's going to take, be an undertaking in and of itself, but that's why there's so much that goes into this, that's why I'm looking at when we officially start that process. It sounds to me like what I'm hearing is, Bay, when we have the master plan completed, we start evaluating it then, so that just gives us thirty, forty-five days before we can actually start setting a month-to-month meeting, perhaps, so that's what I-
Like Barry says, I think I should have made it June, but still, yeah.
But Barry, are you asking us to authorize or tear down the buildings?
Tear down, but you already can build it, yes.
Do it, finally. Go ahead, do it. We could have made a voice vote on afternoon, Michelle, we can just say, nod our heads, say, burn it down, take it down.
Court, did you get what you needed?
I did, I thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council.
Brad? It's right up there. At one point in time, and I don't know whether, whether you still have this thing, but have you shared with, you shared with us once, some possibilities based on, was it Florida State, some of their, so you've got something started-
Yes, sir.
That, that could, depending on where we position it, so-
Yeah, that could all come into play depending on what the, the master plan comes back with.
That's the expertise that has done this, you know, fifty thousand before, since this is, you know.
Florida's a lot flatter than this land was.
But Mike's right, I think we were presented that, that's pretty proactive on Brad's part.
There's a jump.
He had operations calls, he had, he had ideas when we first were looking into that, and that is much appreciated, Brad, thank you.
Next on the agenda is something that I would like to present in the form of a resolution. The first day of April, I believe, is the National Volunteer Appreciation Day, for lack of a better word. But what we found out is that National Volunteer Week is April sixth through the twelfth. And what I would like to propose is, is a resolution declaring April sixth through the twelfth as a more of a local volunteer appreciation week. There's no way that we could sit down and name every club, every church, every individual, every, anybody that donates and volunteers time in the town. So what I would like to propose is a resolution stating, whereas National Volunteer Week is April sixth through the twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, and whereas National Volunteer Week is about recognizing and encouraging people to seek out ways to engage in their communities, and whereas during this week, volunteers all over the country will perform service projects and be recognized with their commitment for, for service, and whereas the quality of life in the town of Christiansburg is greatly improved by the contributions of volunteers and their organizations, and whereas these volunteers donate their time to a variety of services, including, but not limited to literacy, food banks, shelters, conservation, senior centers, youth services, and whereas the town of Christiansburg has many volunteers who contribute to town services, such as the fire department and the rescue squad. And whereas these contributions and commitment of those volunteers cannot be measured in terms of dollars, but it is instead measured in the spirit of goodwill that multiplies throughout our community as a result of their good works. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Christiansburg Town Council, meeting in regular session, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen, adopts this resolution declaring April sixth through the twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, as National Volunteer Week. And since I'm not allowed to, I can't put it in the form of a motion, but I'd certainly appreciate anybody who would.
I'll put that into a motion.
Sir.
Put a motion in a second. Ms. Clerk, do we need voice votes on these with us? Vote.
Councilman Bishop. Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilman Joe Walter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier.
Aye.
Six A. Thank you. Council discussion in action regarding sponsorship advertisement policy.
That's basically a follow-up to what Terry presented. If we proceed with having advertising, or if we, if it approved in the budget for the sign, if we can pursue advertising on it. Right now, I'm not comfortable telling only advertise on a town sign, so I appreciate.
Go ahead. I mean, is it, do we really-
Unless it's included in the budget, can we revisit this?
That's what I would prefer to do, we've heard the presentation, we've had the councilmen that's brought up some points we need to consider, but yeah, I certainly think, I feel more comfortable to get some time to ruminate on it.
Thank you. Mr. Van Hoosier, Mr. Stipes, Finance Committee report annual budget for the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen.
Well, the staff have been diligently working on putting something together for each, all of this to review and take a look at. And we've had three or four meetings with them. I'm very encouraged by the progress that we've made. Rather than hit the bottom line or anything, I think what best to do is, Val will put together a little presentation to go through what's, what it's on, what's on it, and where we're at with it and so forth, and I'd like to do that. And if you have any questions, Brad and I will try to answer them, or Valerie, or whoever.
I know it's getting like, everybody's getting tired because it's already been a long night, and we saved the best for the last. So I will talk fast and try and get through it, but I'll try and slow down because sometimes I get going too fast and I lose everybody, so, there we go. What we're going to try and look at is just a quick walk through the budget document, so that everybody's familiar with how to look at, how to read it, because it is over a hundred pages long, and it gets a little confusing where everything goes. So for a refresher for those who've been here for a few years, and for Councilman Bishop who's new to our council, I think it will help everybody walk through the document and understand what they're looking at. So we'll walk through that real quick. We'll talk about what's been included in this draft, revenues and fee increases that are in the draft, what are the capital requests, a summary of where we are right now, what's our economic outlook moving forward, so the forecast that we have in the budget documents for you, and what our conclusions are, so, and then you can decide where we go from here. So walk through the budget document. The first is a letter from the town manager, which is on pages one and two, and that's really a summary of what's in the budget, what's not. It talks about some of the inclusions and uninclusions, and what our thoughts were in putting this document before you today, as long as all, as well as all of the input from the finance committee that we've received over the last couple of months. The organizational chart kind of is on the next pages, and that lays out just how we're organized in terms of the government, and who's who, what's what, and how everybody fits together to make this thing work. And of course, at the top is the citizens, and then the town council, the town manager, and everything else that comes along with that. So we give you a little organizational chart to help you understand what some of the departments and programs are, and who are managing those. We then include about five pages that talks about each of our boards and commissions, who's on them. Allison was working on updating this for us, so I'm not sure that we've got all the updates in. Thank you, Allison. So the next draft will have all the updates on the commission and board members for you, so that you can familiarize yourself with who the board commissioners are. The balance sheets are included for the general fund and the enterprise fund from the audit from two thousand and thirteen. Those start on page twenty-two and twenty-three. Then the next part is a narrative executive summary and a summary table, and that we refer to as Exhibit One, that's on pages twenty-four, twenty-five, and then the sort of table is on twenty-six and twenty-seven. Those, twenty-six and twenty-seven are kind of what I call the summary pages, that I'll always refer you to, to the bottom, for the bottom line, where are we with respect to total revenues, total expenditures for each type of fund, and where do we stand in terms of excess of revenues over expenditures or vice versa. So that's kind of the summary page where I'll try and always get you to. There's also the, twenty-four and twenty-five is a little bit of a narrative of what that table says. And then we have a couple of charts. Just a quick picture view of where our money comes from and where our money goes, and how it's allocated. And those are on pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine from the draft document. And the next exhibit is Exhibit Two, and this is all of our capital outlay plans for the year that are listed by department. They include capital equipment, vehicles, large pieces of IT equipment, renovations, construction projects, stormwater projects, street projects, and a whole variety, and they're all listed out in Exhibit Two.
Valerie, can I interrupt this a minute?
Sure.
If we look at page twenty-six, in the block in column, at the third or fourth lineup, you see that one point two-two-eight, meaning two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. That is the map that we're showing that this budget is in excess of the balanced budget. But then if you look, as you mentioned, you go to page thirty-three, if you're looking to center the page under the stormwater, you'll see that there are six projects there that we receive grants for, and all of those grants right there are fifty-fifty matches. But we have some others also that are twenty percent matches. So if you look at down on the page below with the trail project, it's got a total capital project, project governed, governed funded. If you look at that number that's going across there, you're basically looking at taking this amount that I mentioned on page twenty-three, a little over one point two million, and invest in that to reap three-point-eight million dollars worth of projects. So we have to decide, you know, how, if we go with this budget, how do we fund that one point two million to be able to take advantage of those grants?
I'm glad he said that, and that is really the clutch of, I don't want to call it a deficit, but the difference between revenues and expenses, that one point two million is a decision and a conversation for council to have, but the finance committee presents that as a good investment for several meaningful capital projects that address stormwater drainage and runoff problems that we're having, and it includes a tremendous amount of- we're having, and it includes a tremendous amount of other people's money, the grant funds. We could parlay 1.49 million dollars into 3.8 million dollars of capital projects that we've all said need to be done, and the staff has been aggressive in seeking funding for those, but I'm glad that's probably the most important footnote here, is this is basically a balanced budget with some decisions from council about capital projects, if we want to take advantage of these grant opportunities. Thanks.
Thank you, Val. I'm sorry.
Okay. We'll cover that again in a minute. So exhibit three then, just as a summary of all the revenues, those are on pages 37 through 38. Then exhibit four is the detail of that, so you kind of get the idea, everything kind of follows something else. Exhibit five is a summary of the departmental expenses, so that'll say things like the police department, the total amount of their budget, fire department, total amount of their budget, and that's the total department expenditures. Then six is a list of the community development and support funds on page 51. I kind of stick that up in the front because it's always an area that we have a lot of conversation about in the budget discussions. These are all of the community organizations that submit donation requests each year as well as different organizations that we are members of and participate in. So we kind of lump those all together as a community development, community support area, so we put those up in exhibit six. And then exhibit seven is all the expenditure details of every department. So if you want to know salaries, wages, blah, 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 for the police department, you can go to exhibit seven and see the detailed budget for the police department or any other dependent department or program of the town. We've also put references in exhibit five, so if you're looking at total for the police department, it'll reference to the page in exhibit seven that you'll find the detail of that. So that's kind of how you walk through the budget. The end of the, part two is the five-year revenue expenditures and projections, as well as capital outlay projections are at the very end of the document, pages 118 to 122. And we usually have a fair amount of discussion about those every year as well. So that's kind of how you walk through the budget. Everything's linked together. There's a description that'll take you from one exhibit to the next exhibit and reference you through. If you have any questions or have difficulty following the flow of information, please feel free to give me a call or stop by, and I'll help walk you through it so that you can have a thorough understanding of what is in front of you. What's included in this draft? We have one full-time position and one retention of the positions from Public Works. As you recall, we talked about in Public Works, the five positions, I believe it was four or five positions from Public Works with the changeover and the trash. We'd like to take one of those positions and move that as a laborer over to the cemetery to meet some of the needs of the cemetery. We've been working and struggling with part-time labor, shared labor with Public Works. Our cemeterian, Kevin Poff, has been very diligent over the last three years and really worked hard to keep things going, but he hasn't had a vacation where he could leave town since he started here, so we need to get him some assistance and somebody that can provide some consistency in the maintenance of the cemetery, having to operate six to seven days a week. So that was the discussion that we had with the finance committee for keeping this position in the budget, and then also the assistant fire marshal and inspector for the fire department. Chief Hanks is charged with inspecting businesses, being the fire marshal, doing fire investigations, as well as running the department as a whole. We have over 600 businesses in the town of Christiansburg that should be visited at least once a year. It's just not really possible for him to do that all by himself and with the limited part-time staff that he has. So we did leave in this assistant fire marshal inspector for the fire department.
The laborer for the cemetery, we anticipate that being utilized in full-time at the cemetery, but if some reason not, he still could do, go back to Public Works and help out temporarily at certain things.
Right. There is a 2% bonus for all employees in November that is included in this draft. And we've got it all kind of lumped in one place for the moment, but it is in the draft. There are modest increases in the general fund revenues and modest increases in operating expenses. There is an increase in water and sewer rates. We have some great information that Jim has already, Jim and Brad are so excited about these, are already talking about the capital grants that we have for some of these projects, and currently at the moment, there are no other proposed fees or tax increases in this budget. The water fee increases would take the minimum bill for water from $18 to $19 for the first 4,000 gallons. The next 96,000 gallons would be from, change from $4.90 to $5.50 per thousand gallon, and over 1,000 gallons would move from $2.90 to $3.30. Water for out-of-town is 1.5% the in-town rates. The minimum bills for sewer would remain unchanged at $28 for the first 4,000 gallons, and then after the first 4,000, it would go to $8.50 per thousand gallons. It was previously $7.55, and again, out-of-town rates are 1.5 times that of in-town rates.
And even with this increase, we're still not breaking even, is that correct?
Not projected to at this point, no. The Water Authority did pass on a 14 cent per thousand gallon or 7% increase to the town for the cost of our water. That amounts to about a total between water and sewer fees of about a $600,000 revenue stream in addition to prior years. Capital equipment and projects, as I mentioned earlier, exhibit two lists all the acquisitions by the department. If you will look at page 33 in your budget document, you'll see that there is a right-hand two extra columns to the right. One of them shows you projects that are in the current year budget, the 2013-14 budget, that are rolling into the next year's budgets because they're not going to complete on time, and also rollovers that were funded with the financing that we're doing this year. So to let you know where the funds are coming from for those, that they are rollovers and that they are something that we planned on paying out with the new financing this year. On 33, you'll see a list of a number of our grant projects, and particularly the stormwater projects. Most of these are 50% match, and you'll see to the right what portion is grant-funded. So we're getting 3.8 million dollars worth of capital projects, completed with 2.2, almost 2.2 million dollars worth of grant funds.
Ms. Twitty, I apologize. What page is that again? Sorry.
Page 33.
Thank you.
Almost 2.2 million in grant funds and about 1.5 million of town funds. We're also able to use one of our CDGT grants to help offset some of our match. So we're starting to do some creative things with some of those other grants that we get that we're allowed to use as match for other grants, which is a little unusual that you get the opportunity to do that, but we'll take advantage of them where we can. So for our funds of roughly 1.5 million, we can turn it into 3.8 million dollars worth of projects.
Real quick, can we move on? You mentioned 600,000 in new revenue to the Water Authority. What sort of projects are they doing? Barry, did they?
No.
No.
Misstatement. It's an increased revenue of 600,000 dollars.
By raising the water and sewer.
Yes.
We realize 600,000 dollars a day.
But the Water Authority increased their rates, didn't they?
Yes, they did.
Yes, it did.
Did they relay anything to us about the reason for that, other than, I mean, are they giving any actual projects?
We've got several projects going on. Do you have any specific ones?
Well, they have a, as part of the joint, they have a...
That's enough. And you'll have to go even further.
They're so hateful. One question on there yet. For us to break even on the water, people said we're going to go from $18 to $19, but we're still going to be, do you know how much we would have to raise to come out even money?
We try every year to project that to come out even money. It just hasn't worked out yet. No, I don't. And probably if we had...
First of all, I'd like to apologize for council. I know this is an overview, but I stepped in, and I'm sure there'll be plenty of time for discussion.
All right. So particular note, we have the stream water, stream restoration projects in the budget, a lot of storm drain, drain engine cover replacement at Brown, Church, Lucasson, Independence, Huckleberry Trail projects, the water system upgrade completion for the Epo Street, the radio meter upgrade, the annual paving program, the downtown improvement project, and renovations of the third floor at the police department, some of the big projects that are in there. This is kind of a breakdown of page 33. Again, just the highlight of the 3.8 million dollars is created in projects by 1.5 million dollars of our money against grant funds of almost 2.2 million dollars. So the point, this is page, ah, I had it written on my draft.
26.
Thank you. This is page 26 that Jim was pointing you to earlier with the, ah, with the 1.2 million dollars. This is effectively, what this does is take all the revenues that we have minus all the expenditures, the support for the government projects, takes into consideration all the capital fund, grants, et cetera, and when we're all said and done, expenditure, revenues minus expenditures and grants, et cetera, it leaves us with 1.2 million that would have to come from reserves to fund everything that's in this current draft.
And utilizing that, our reserve would still be at 36%?
38%.
38%.
38%, with our minimum being 35.
If you look down at the very, very bottom, these are the unassigned, unbalanced reserves, and that 14 million would be about 38%, and our targets are 35 to 40.
That is after funding the 1.2 out of reserve.
That's correct. Okay, economic outlook. The five-year forecast, I'm sorry, they're on the last few pages, it didn't get input into this slide. Some of the things that we've taken into consideration in the forecast and are projected in there is moderate growth in revenue streams and some increase in operating costs just due to inflationary measures and ongoing increases in operating costs. We expect to see a continued pull on capital acquisition and projects. As you know, every year in our capital project planning, we pull out all kinds of capital that we just can't fund every year, and we expect to see that continue. We don't expect to see a lot of, given the circumstances, we don't expect to be able to afford expansion of current services beyond what we currently are. We're kind of gotten locked in a certain stream of revenue that we haven't been able to overcome other than these small incremental increases. So in all of the budgets that we've gone through for this year, as well as in the projections, we've pretty much held people to last year's numbers and only really allowed increases to keep the increase down to what our increases are projected to be in revenues. We're getting locked into this, not being able to expand beyond where we are today because the revenue base just isn't growing. So looking forward, we are going to have to look for increasing grants. We have incorporated a lot of increasing grants in the budget, a lot of increase for the stormwater projects because they're federally and state mandated compliant, so we expect to see more DEQ SLAB-type funding for the stormwater projects. Some of the other projects, the parks, recreation, trails, those kinds of things, we'll continue to go after those and try and seek those because we'll need those for funding. We have projected some of those dollars into the forecast into the future for accommodating those things, and the staff is recommending that we look at implementation of a 2016 stormwater fee to help fund some of those stormwater projects. So I think moving forward, we have some struggles. I mean, our current capital needs that we project outward versus the funds that we project outward to be available for that, there is a bit of a shortfall of a couple million dollars a year. So looking forward, we have to look at ways to improve revenue streams, find new revenue streams to be able to accommodate the growth that I know the council wants to see in several areas, but we need to find ways to be able to accommodate that growth because if we move too much in this direction, we have to take something away from this direction. So that's kind of what's in the forecast for right now. The 1.2 million is in use of reserves. Opportunities or other thoughts with respect to that? Rather than using the reserves, we could do additional borrowings from this year's financing to fund perhaps the second half of the water meter project or some of the other infrastructure projects. Doing a borrowing of either 1.2 million or some portion of that would likely increase our annual debt service by about $95,000 a year. We could consider an increase in the consumer utility tax by 50 cents, which raises about $100,000 per year. And this is just for information, we're not suggesting anything of the sort, but just to let you know what a one-cent increase in real estate tax is is approximately $200,000. Finance committee also discussed possible fees for fire calls or increases or and increases in recreation fees. That's all I have for you tonight, except for to answer your questions.
The 2% bonus, is it one month, one month, just one time, just exactly what we did this year?
Correct.
And now I need, this is a given, I know typically deal with what I hear and understand, you know, we want to have to find other ways to make money, but I just want to remind, it goes both ways. We just don't have to cut services, but we can streamline our procedures, how we do things to save money. I mean, there's, I mean, are we looking into that, like credit card fees that we eat or that we pay for for our clients who use credit cards? Did we even discuss that this year about rolling that cost like other institutions on to the consumer?
No, we haven't.
No, we didn't talk about that. Right, I know it's a starting point, I was just curious. I mean, that's what you have, I mean, did you look into all that or was it just presented? I guess...
Obviously, they did the bulk of the work and put this together, but we've been through it pretty extensive and raised a lot of questions, and you know, there was, obviously, the big area that has suffered is capital expenditures, whether it be equipment or whatever. But on the other hand, I'm encouraged with what we're doing with grants and so forth to take care of some of the things that we know are going to be precious in the near future, particularly the stormwater thing. And if you look at the, if you look at the estimated funds available, which is on page 121 for the five years, and then if you look at what the projects was going to be over that course of five years, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we're short in about a 1.3 million dollar deficit on a yearly basis between what we project we need to do in the next five years capital-wise versus what the funds are available. So we need to continue to look at that, how we, do we, how do we make up those funds? Where do they come from? And savings is definitely one of the areas we need to look at.
Well, it's great looking forward, but I mean, ever since I've been on council, I think we projected a deficit almost every year. So I mean, I think that's something we got to take serious. You got to look at your most recent past. I mean, the future's great, but this isn't anything new that's been presented to the council, diving into those reserves or potential use of reserves. So I'm excited about the process and, you know, I congratulate Val, it's getting easier and easier every year, you're playing it better compared to my first year, and of course, staff as well, but I'm excited about the work sessions we're going to have. I don't know if I use the word easy, but perhaps...
It's easier for us to understand.
We just got it, we just got it tonight.
We have over 7 million.
We've had over seven million dollars out of capital this year.
Yeah, there's been a tremendous pairing. Councilman Hall talked about the park. We all, and I, we all on council here have our own things that we'd like to see that are prior, the first of priorities. And most of those are transferred to this body as a whole. But this, this is the reality, and just to emphasize, we presented this budget. The staff has been very aggressive at pursuing other people's money, grant money, to achieve the things that we said need to be done in our Vision 2020. They're not, they're not, they're not something you read in Time Magazine, but they're things that affect people's daily lives, the stormwater problems and so forth that we have. But the staff has been aggressive in pursuing other people's money. And now it's decision time for us. Do we want to take advantage of this and make those investments? Because that's what that one point two million dollars is. If we took out the one point four nine, the one point five million that we, we were successful on eight grants. We were hoping for maybe two or three, and we hit all eight. And so I just want to emphasize that that one point two million dollars can be completely reversed by us saying, no, thank you, we don't want to do these other capital projects with fifty to eighty percent of other people's money. And that brings it not only a balanced budget, it's under, it's within, so.
I encourage each council member to go through this thoroughly and be prepared to discuss it and bring forth your suggestions and ideas and so forth. You know, the more people we have to look at it, the more we can learn from it and go better together.
But I mean, what you're saying, Brad, is we reject that and we are throwing away money that other people are giving us on fifty to eighty percent.
All six of us look at the world a little differently. But I'm just making that point when finance committee having this being our fourth meeting here, that we bringing this to council as a decision, and that's what this is. The reason that there is that difference between bottom line is because we were successful in being presented an opportunity to use fifty, you know, this grant, we hit on eight projects, we paired one of those out and we're presenting seven. And these are projects that affect people's lives on a daily basis. The flooding and the drainage problems and so forth, this is, but that's what that one point two million dollars is.
Some of these projects are going to be things we are going to have to do in the future regardless.
Yeah, so if we don't, if we decide not to fund it through reserves, then we basically put that amount of work into next year's, but-
Future assignments.
Future assignments. So this is, seems like a good, a reasonable, and from a financial standpoint to, if you even wanted to fund it over twenty years, it's still important to get the work done now.
And staff backs all this and they think it's, all these grants that we've gained are good ideas and the trickle-down that we have, is that correct?
Steve, I'm sure that they wouldn't bring those forward if they didn't-
We didn't think it was good.
These are the projects that people come to this council chambers and tell us that they're having problems. The Diamond Hill, Ellic, these projects are the ones we hear about when people come and say, something's got to be done.
I got to tell you, you just mentioned Diamond Hills and just, there's a lot of talk in that area from a lot of enthusiastic individuals that are close by that, and all throughout town, that are looking forward to what's going to happen there. A lot of, hold on, my wife and I went to the house recently and that's the person the realtor mentioned.
I know, they're going to do some work on something I can't hear about.
Cameo, Cameo court was here for how many times? But this, that's, that's, that's the point is, these are the, these are the projects that people are begging for the town to help with.
Well, I'm sure that you're going to schedule a work session sometime and-
And it all is a perspective, and projects are projects. Those are something that we need to get done. But I guess, let me dive into this because this is something we always hit every year. These wish lists, like the aquatic center LED, is that something that's set in stone, the LED sign?
We can, we can do whatever we want to with this project.
It's come out of there the last two years, and I'll be honest with you. I've told Barry the last two years that I would not support it, I know. And I don't know whether they influenced him taking down the budget or not, but it didn't even come to us.
But now you support it?
Well, it's in there this year. We've got to try to do something to increase the revenues over that and-
And you think the LED sign's going to do it?
I think it'll have an impact. I don't know whether I, I'm sure, I can't put a number on it like ten percent like she did. I think it'll have some impact on it. The other thing is, the generation of some revenue through advertising, if we decide to go that way, is a possibility. I know it takes two and a half years to pay it off, but then you're looking at generating some revenue. And sure, you know, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year is not a lot of revenue, but it's a start.
Ms. Twitty, is the budget and in your presentation tonight, is this available online for the public?
It will be after, we'll have her put this up on the website.
Great, both under the full budget draft and the-
I can.
If you don't-
I don't usually put the presentations up there, but I can.
It helps me.
Terry, I didn't mean to punch out. You actually, I mean, I could go through this whole thing, looking at vehicles and everything else.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Twitty, any further questions before we, okay. Work sessions. Glenn Horne, how many?
I'll go get to that.
Okay. Town managers report, Mr. Helms?
Yeah, I received a copy of the bills. I'll try to answer questions. We'll pay them if y'all agree upon it.
Well, there's a, there's a charge on there or something at heart right here. What is that? I'll be honest with you, I've got it here.
Batting cages?
It's on page six. It's right in the middle from, no, I'm sorry, I take that back.
That's on page one, on BSN Sports.
That's for nets for the batting cages. They were, they've been up for a few years and weathered and basically got holes and have become unsafe.
Now, is that just replacing ones near the dugouts or is that going into the outfield and?
That is replacing the ones at the, they're next to the maintenance building.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw, I think this on page one, fleet one. And I know that everybody's working on this, but I saw that the fuel cost was, was thirty thousand dollars this year. I mean, this month. And I know, Ms. Helms, that you, you work on, and I know each department is working on keeping their mileage down and the use of the vehicles down. I think gas prices are just, are just going to continue to go up. And I, I myself would recommend that we, we keep on trying to keep that reduced as much as we can.
Mr. Helms, on page two, because I'm just trying to tell, I said what Mr. Echo just mentioned. The Lowe's home, is that for the same batting cages? That's for the same, I guess, the refurbishment, is that correct?
Not all, not all of that, six thousand dollars for that part of the bus.
And various buildings, yeah, right. But that, that goes for the same, it's the same, it's not construction new batting cage. That's refurbished, the current batting cage that are over there, or the current batting cages over there. The other question I forgot, Mr. Helms, would be on page one and on page six. Page six is Helms, Inc. On page one, it's environmental land waste, sludge hauling at fourteen thousand. Then there's the sludge disposal, fourteen thousand. Is that, that's not the same charge though, correct? There's, there's a haul and it was-
He, he got caught in our changeover of approved bills. So one was paid earlier in the month, and then he, then he got his bill in early enough to get caught.
Yeah, I just saw the exact same amount.
It's all the same company, right?
Yeah, it's all the same companies.
It's all the same amount, just kind of, thank you.
What we do on that is fourteen thousand dollars a month, and then in June, we settle up and pay what the rest of we owe.
So may I move to approve the bills?
I have one more thing here. I saw, I think this on page one, too, that the shuttle bus fee was, was a little over twelve hundred dollars. And I thought, boy, that's, that's awfully high. And then I started thinking about all the swim meets at the rec center, I mean, the aquatic center has had over the last six or seven weeks. Seems like every weekend I go by there and they have a big meet there. And I think that just shows something about the, and I think Bill Beecher, I'm not sure if he's responsible for this or not, but I would hope that maybe he can say to the council, I said something about that, and recognize what you guys are doing just because your shuttle bill is so high.
That cost is actually retrieved from the meet organization that comes in, so that the revenue does come back into the town.
But you guys have been doing a great job. I'm not sure how many weeks in a row it seems like you had, you know, a full mouse.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Pay the bills, please.
Had a note passed to me, the wrestling coach, Darrell Weber, had the meeting tonight scheduled for tomorrow night. He respectfully requests that the wrestling team recognition take place at the next meeting.
You guys all agree with that?
Absolutely.
I wouldn't want to fight him over it, so.
Like to ask council to consider no parking on one side of Lyons Drive for two reasons. One is garbage collection, second one is emergency vehicles. I don't want the decision denied, but I consider that on the street committee, we'll look at it.
Barry, what's up in here?
Lyons Gate behind the rec center.
Oh, the circle?
Yeah.
It is tight down there.
Would you want the street committee to look at it or?
It's already one way.
One way.
It's just one way. It's a little wider than the normal lane. The staff has requested that this allow parking on one side of the road, which would probably be the inside or be the outside. Because, I mean, the loop road.
Right inside.
Right inside.
Yeah, the inside. That may, I mean.
That would be the, it would be the outside.
Park on the inside, don't park on the outside.
If this is a, if this is something that the town's request, the staff's request, we would look at. If we refer to the street committee, it's going to be looked at before next meeting. And the rollout is on April seventh of the, so is this something that we need to be more aggressive on taking a stance on now to alleviate that problem before it becomes a problem?
Be helpful that we haven't had any, public, any comment or anything from, I don't think there is there.
If it's a one-way street, you don't need parking on both sides, as it is anyways.
I don't think you can actually go through the circle anyway. Don't you have to go all the way around the?
You do have to go around.
Yeah, because you can't, you can't.
Yeah, it's one way already.
I mean, it'd be nice to take action, but I wouldn't go on request it tonight.
It might be appropriate to advertise it for the next street committee meeting so that any residents, ten?
Ten. So we're going to refer to street committee?
Yeah. They're the council in the same weeks.
Absolutely. Do we have, on that note, when we're talking about one way, where are we with Oak Tree Boulevard?
We don't have funding, so that's just on hold. Long-term problem.
We couldn't make no parking on one side of that? Isn't that, wasn't that part of the, or the most inexpensive plan out there?
Yeah, I believe it was the most cost-effective.
I mean, we still won't have problems with trash pickup there if we're handling Lyons Gate and making that no parking on one side. Shouldn't we just go ahead and, for solid waste disposal, shouldn't we approach the Oak Tree Boulevard as well?
I would. I would both on the street committee for the next.
Yeah, I would.
Do them same light, can't you?
That's why we want to make it easier on our automation, get those.
Right, well, I'm sure that as, as it rolls out, there's probably going to be one or two other places that are going to think this would be advantageous to have it in front of.
Hopefully not over here.
The, also, I ask you to start thinking about, we're a member of Virginia's First Regional Industrial Facilities Authority. We've been a member for, we helped create it, it's been fifteen or sixteen years. I don't, we haven't participated in any of the projects as of today. I'd like to consider getting out of that authority. Their major focus on the industrial park at Commerce Park at Dublin next to the airport. And we're not participating in that, so.
Is there any fee that we haven't been a part of that?
It's five, it's five thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I, I, I think we need to get out.
I can bring the resolutions instead of next meeting.
When does that reduce? Is that year to year?
First of July.
So we have a couple months for it.
I'll bring it to you next meeting. Wells Fargo Bank lot, Wells Fargo Bank and lots for sale up here at the-
Barry.
Okay, it's under contract.
Are they closed? Are they going to shut that bank down? What are they doing?
They don't own it. It's owned by someone else. They've got a, they're leasing it right now.
So Wells Fargo would be the one out there across from Kmart?
Well, I don't think this bank was going anywhere. I think the land owner wanted to sell it.
Oh, I see. So it's going to stay there.
Yeah, I was going to tell the bankers there yesterday. He said, I don't know anything about this.
Just, just the land owner, I think, wants to sell it. The bank, as far as no plans to stay there. The paid time off work session, Ms. Dillon gave me some dates. She's available. On Tuesday night, she's not available. She has other council meetings, board supervisors' meetings she has to get to every Tuesday night. So I'd like for her to come and help explain the PTO policy. And she recommends changing it also. So she's available thirty-first of March, let's see what day it is. That's a Monday, second of April, which is a Wednesday, and then the seventh. Basically Mondays and Wednesdays through, starting the very first of March. If it'd be your pleasure to set up a public meet, our work session for one of those nights.
Let me ask this question. Are we still doing something on April fourth?
Yes.
All right, and what time is that going to be?
I think it's going to be six.
Six.
And that's, yeah, we-
That's going to be busy. We're trying to cram a day into three hours.
And I knew we were going to meet on Saturday, but I wasn't available on that Saturday morning because-
We're just going to do it Friday night at some point.
Unless you're available now and then.
Yes, I'll get that out to you.
All right, good.
And location.
Is there a sense of urgency on the paid time off?
The only urgency is by the end of April, employees have an option of changing from Plan One or Plan Two retirement to the new retirement system. And they would know, they don't know what their benefits are going to be as far as vacation and leave or sick leave or whatever.
That's by the, you said the end of April, Mr. Helms?
By the end of April. But I was going to ask, we could maybe have it, combine it with the work session on, on the budget. Spend about a half hour on paid time off and an hour or so on the budget, start off the initial meeting.
Sure, we need just a half an hour.
It would be there in seconds. A half a second would be, yeah, a half a second could work for that. At the Wednesday.
Is it a second? I'm sorry, is that a Wednesday?
Or seventh? Is it a Monday?
There's a, well.
It's a Tuesday, it's at a, it's a Wednesday.
The second is a Wednesday.
Seventh is a Monday.
Seventh is a Monday.
Or ninth is a Wednesday.
If we go on the seventh and we get the meetings on the Friday night late, it will be late. And then Monday, we're going to have meetings all night. Monday's, I don't know, Wednesday. Can we look at the, at the ninth of April perhaps, the day after our?
She's available that night.
If that'd be okay with the council? Well, I'm fine with even going before council. If y'all want to start it, go from five to seven.
She's not available on that.
I'm sorry, well, you'd be here for the council meeting though.
Ms. Dillon, Elizabeth Dillon.
Oh, Elizabeth Dillon, I'm sorry, I'm, jeez.
I would, I would rather not have it segregated from another meeting. I don't think it rises to the importance of setting up a separate meeting just for that.
Well, I was proposing doing a budget work session, right, start with that and then go to budget work session.
Was that Wednesday?
Not on Tuesday night.
Not on, yeah.
But you said the following, Wednesday though, on the ninth?
Ninth, twenty-first is a Monday, and twenty-third is a Wednesday. Those are all- Ninth, twenty-first is a Monday, and twenty-third is a Wednesday, those are all, she's available all those days.
Nine, you ever consensus date, start throwing it, how about the ninth?
I'll go for it.
Ninth of April.
I can do that, kind of.
Yeah, ninth of April, book them, you know.
Six o'clock?
And that's budget and PTO, and mayor's passing in. There was a discretionary vote.
We have a lot of dead horses on the streets, I should have been part of something for us.
Okay, yeah, just want to make sure everybody's aware that once they set the bridge on Huckleberry Trail over one-fourteen, it's not gonna be open until fall, September, October. The bridge will be there, but it's not gonna have a deck on, it's not gonna have a ramp off the other end, it will not be open once they set it.
Do we have a specific date with what you said?
I'm trying to get that, as soon as we get it, I'll let her, I'll have council know, and if some of you'd like to watch it or...
I'm telling you, that stretch is, there's a lot of people excited about that, a lot of people traveling that stretch from the Rec Center.
You gotta keep that kid from New York, it climbed half the World Trade Center.
But if people ask you, don't tell them it's gonna be open soon, please. That's all I have.
Henry, did you over?
I, but, yeah, I actually have one thing, uh, and we discussed it in our committee prior to council, is, uh, and I've been CCing town council on it, whether or not you update yourself on it, but Cord and I discussed it tonight along with Barry, and, uh, what we have, we have a resident that's been paying for sewer for, since two thousand eight, and he came to found out, well, he found out that he's still on a septic, he wasn't on sewer. We've had this situation a couple times since I've been on council, and, you know, I've talked to this individual, and, you know, he's running into exactly what we, we have all, being a little cash strapped, so, Cord and I discussed it, and, uh, I would like to see us help him out with his tap fee, especially since he's been paying since two thousand eight. I know by law we only have to refund him three years, but it's a little hard to swallow when you look at somebody paying for a service that's not on it, and, uh, I would like to help him out with the tap fee, especially since he has to, you know, dig his line all the way out.
You know, one of the things that we need to look at about that too, you know, how long do the prior people pay for sewer? And, and on septic, so, what, what is your recommendation, what is it?
Oh, of course, I mean, it's either waive or, uh, we can retro it back to the two thousand eight tap-on fee, which is rela, relatively, I mean, it's less than what he's paid towards it, and then give him credit for it.
I mean, either way, either way you go, you're exceeding of what the state would require us to do, we would be going the extra mile for the citizen.
Um, and if you, if you went ahead and waived it, or if you give him a credit based on the two thousand eight amount, you're still gonna pay for the entire connection.
But it seems to me the better that possible would just be to waive it and connect.
Well, we did it once before, didn't we?
We did.
We waived it. The connection fee.
It came, I don't remember, but...
Do I know?
I'm sure we waived it one other time.
We do have you remembered, so.
Yeah, we waived it.
I'm sure we did.
Well, that was an interesting thing, yeah.
That was.
So...
Well, I'd be in favor of waiving.
Sure.
Should we make that in the form of a motion, Mr. Mayor? If we should, if we would, I'll, I'll make the motion, if, if that, we think that should be in the form of motion.
I think so.
I'll, I'll make the motion in that, for the property owner, Mr. Stillwell, I believe, uh, that, uh, the town council agreed to waive the connection fee to town sewer for this individual, like his particular real property.
I'll say.
Any discussion?
Yes, yes. Is that motion to waive the connections fee and refund?
No, just to waive the connection fee.
Just waive the connection.
Okay, but to refund three years or to apply at all?
No, wait, connection fee.
Just to waive.
No harm, no fail.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, I think that's, uh, the reason why you do, in particular on this situation, when he's been billed that for many years and did not have.
I agree.
So we have a, uh, motion and a second to, uh, waive the two connection fee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, is there anything else to come before council tonight?
One quick thing, Mr. Mayor, I've been approached by some residents in the town that live over in the, uh, Hans Meadow area, and, uh, I'd like to refer something to the street committee, if it has the blessing of council, um, that on the Run Oak Street, um, where it connects or perpendicular with Depot, or that's where the stock yard is, um, that if you're going from downtown Chris River towards, out towards the, uh, one-eight, uh, exit one-eighteen, try to turn left there, uh, I think the light is really quick, and there's, I don't even know if there's even a green area, there's no...
There's not a green area, I find it every day.
I've had a number of residents asking me about that, and if we could look into that, uh, if there could possibly be a green area, they said they sometimes get stuck there two or three times waiting because of the traffic and all, and it's a very quick light. Um, so I have a respectful request that we refer that over to the street committee, just to look into it.
It's a long time coming, right there.
So, that's, uh, if we could do that, I'd be, Mr. Chris.
You will?
That's...
Yeah, I think, I think that's well needed. Anything else?
I got a hot thing. First of all, I, well, I wanna, you know, I, I, some residents on Diana Drive requested, a lot of kids on there, a lot of traffic, um, and the town immediately put up a, uh, watch for children sign going from, uh, I wanna think...
Harkrader.
Harkrader, uh, but where the majority of traffic, from what I'm understanding from residents, is coming, is coming from the water tower on that gravel road, so if we have an opportunity in, in the next few weeks, put up a, you know, watch for children sign coming the opposite.
Gravel road?
The gravel road from the church, uh, that hasn't been paved on Diana Drive, seems like that's what we're...
Public street?
Yeah.
It's gonna be a public street.
It's not right now, is that correct?
We have taken it out.
Chain it off if we so desire.
But several of them ask if, if it would be an issue to put it up, not only coming from Harkrader, but coming the other way as well.
Mr. Cupid?
No, I'm, I'm, I thank you, though.
I think so, thank you for asking. Uh, I will, uh, I think you all had a flyer, the, uh, American Red Cross is having a blood drive, Monday, the twenty-first of April, nine AM to one PM, to Rec Center. And it's got some instructions, you can, uh, schedule your appointment online or whatever, but, uh, you can, do you all get one of these, I can go on the packets, I had somewhere, I'll leave it out if anybody's interested, we'll put it on there. Anything else now to come before council? We are driven, thank you very much for your time and effort.